Good morning. The Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, Regular Board of County Commissioners meeting will now be called to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent reflection for the first responders and members of the armed forces, followed by an invocation by none other than Wesley Davis, our property appraiser, and our attorney, Jennifer Shula, will be leading us in the pledge. Please rise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and how appropriate the moment of silence has been in light of what happened last week with the police officers. So, thank you for doing that. Please assume an attitude of prayer. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to live in the country that we do, for the opportunities that we have in front of us, for the community that we live in, for the elected officials that are making decisions today, not just on the five-year plan, but for generations to come. May you give them knowledge, wisdom, and guidance in the decisions they make today and forever in the future. In your heavenly name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Are there any additions, deletions to the agenda from the board?
Moved to approve.
We have a motion by Vice Chairman Law, seconded by Commissioner Moss. Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to proclamations and presentations. We have a presentation proclamation honoring African-American pioneer Tyrone Perry, Coach Perry. And we'll have Commissioner Ayman present this proclamation to Coach.
Sir, it's my honor to read this proclamation and present this to you on behalf of the board. And I'm gonna read it, and then we're gonna talk.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
This is a proclamation honoring African-American pioneer Tyrone Perry. Whereas African-American pioneers have made significant contributions to shaping our community through their dedication, leadership, and unwavering commitment to excellence. And whereas Coach Tyrone Perry, a native of Gifford, Florida, has devoted over three decades to empowering young athletes and students, inspiring them to achieve both on and off the field, and fostering a legacy of excellence in sports and education. And whereas Coach Perry has achieved numerous milestones in his career, including being named the 2023 Sunshine State Athletic Association Atlantic 11-Man Football State Champion Head Coach, a 2013-2014 Florida Track and Field Hall of Fame Coach of the Year, and a celebrated educator and mentor who has influenced countless lives through his roles as teacher and coach. And whereas Perry's, Coach Perry's achievements extend beyond athletics as he exemplifies the values of resilience, perseverance, and community service, evidenced by his recognition as the 1993 Indian River County School District Teacher of the Year and his tireless work with the youth of Indian River County. And whereas Coach Perry's unwavering dedication to his community and steadfast belief in the power of education, mentorship, and determination have inspired countless individuals to strive for greatness and to create a brighter future for themselves and their community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, we recognize and honor Coach Tyrone Perry for his outstanding contributions as an African-American pioneer, exemplary achievements in education and athletics, and his enduring commitment to making a positive impact on the lives of those he serves. Adopted this 25th day of February 2025 and signed by all five county commissioners. Coach Perry, this is a proclamation, it's a piece of paper that doesn't say enough of what you've done and the lives you've touched throughout your career in the school system and as a citizen, a resident of this county, along with your athletic coaching that I'm sure made better students and better people to represent this community in Indian River County. You've touched a lot of lives, and it's just friggin' awesome, what you've done. Well, Coach, this is your opportunity to speak a little bit, and I know that you have the capacity to speak very well and communicate with the students, the individuals that you're molding, that you're shaping. You're a grit developer. You are a role model, par excellence, and I know that. And you know, I just wanted to share this. As I approached you before the meeting started, what was the first thing you said? How's your son, Joseph?
Yes, sir.
You know, when I mentioned, and I mentioned that we were having a proclamation, he was at the house two weeks ago. And when I mentioned it, he said, "Coach Perry's getting a proclamation. He deserves it. Why didn't you do it sooner?" And he shared how much you mean to him now, the connectivity. There was another, quite a few people have mentioned how much you truly mean to them. As Joseph said, it's not the topic, it's the treatment. It's what you do and how you do it. And whether it was driver education, sports, we had a story for that, too. And an overwhelming experience. And I'll tell you, there's been a lot of teachers, there's been a lot of guiding lights, there's a lot, and they're all great in their own way. He mentions you.
Yes, sir.
And I was, I said, "Well, that was great. I knew he meant something." He says, "Well, that's how I got one of those bossy letters." He had five of them. And he said, "You meant a lot to him, that you thrust it him into more achievements than he anticipated." You know, he also said something else. He recanted a story about the driving, and he wanted me to tell you, "Go Birds." Maybe you want to share that, but I just want to say that I appreciate what you've done as a father, as a member of this community, and a person who contacts so many individuals that have something to say. You know, a lot of people have something to say, but when it's all good, it's gotta be about you. And I really appreciate what you do for all the children in the community, and I hope that retirement is nowhere in sight because we have more work to be done for our future. Thank you, Coach.
Thank you. Well, I didn't get here alone. As you can see, my family, my coworkers, they made it possible, starting with my grandfather. He always gave back, you know, in Gifford. And that's all I wanted to ever do, was to have my spot and give back to the kids. And it's been a blessing, and I couldn't have got it done with my family, coworkers, you guys giving me this opportunity, and I just want to say thank you.
Anybody else? There's gotta be somebody else out there who's got something to say.
They say enough. They say enough.
You want to say something?
There's gotta be.
Come on up!
This is my first cousin, but we're like brothers and sisters. And she's on the downside of 35 years in the military. Thirty-six, I'm sorry, thirty-six, thirty-six. And she was a first female, what was the position? Chief Warrant Officer Five of the Army, so she had a lot to do with it.
But this is not about me.
Okay.
This is not about me. This is about you. Thank you so much for this opportunity to be able to say a few words. It is definitely an honor to be here to see and witness all of the things, his accomplishments and his achievements. He's a very humble person. When he gives, he gives not to receive anything in return except for the best in those that he imparts in. And so, it is such an honor to be able to give God, first and foremost, the honor and the glory for being able to see you all, to recognize all the things that he has done. Many things that he's given and he's done that many people will never know. The countless days, nights, hours, that he's not just been a coach, but he's been a mentor. He's been a father to some folks, right? Waking up in the middle of the night, going to someone's rescue because they didn't know if they wanted to live or to die. And so, it goes far beyond just an athletic coach, right, or a driver. It goes beyond, it's the humanity and the humility in which he serves, not just this community. But he's absolutely global, because again, as he stated, I'm in the Army, and I take him wherever I go, and I take his story wherever I go. So again, thank you so much for honoring not just him and what he does, the spirit that lives in him, but for the coaches and the staff that stand behind him and support him, and for his family and his friends. So, I'm super proud of you. Thank you for being my brother in all sense. And so, keep doing what you're doing, and only know what you do for Christ will last.
First and foremost, thank you for your service. But I just want to say that you said something about, "Many people will not know, they do know." You just ask the youth. The youth know who the go-to guy is and the guy that cares a lot about them as they're going through it. So, I think they are aware, and you know, if you really want to know about things, you talk to the younger ones because they're the most impacted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
Just really quickly, I'm Mr. Cummings, I'm the principal at Sebastian River High School. I do take it as an honor to be able to come and celebrate this moment with Coach Perry. Just really quickly, when I first became the principal of Sebastian River High School five years ago, I already knew Coach Perry. You know, he was one of those individuals within our community whom I looked up to coming up. And our first meeting, sat down, and I asked him about his vision and his mission within football. The first thing he said to me is, "Mr. Cummings, it's not just about football. It's more than football. It's about life. It's about the wins and losses, not just on the field, but the wins and losses that we as a people will experience in life." And that's the lesson that he has taught to a lot of kids. When you're talking about your son, talk about my children, whom he's coached, teaching them about, you know, how to deal with, how to celebrate the wins, but also how to overcome the losses in life, which we all know, you know, throughout life, we're gonna have wins and we're gonna have losses. But how do we persevere? How do we come out on top, even in those challenging moments? So again, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
From the bottom of our heart.
Anyone else? Come on up. Come on up, Coach.
Get your picture, Coach. Anybody else you want up here?
All you wish. Coach. Come on up. They'll take one with themselves and then one with the family. Took a picture with all the students that Coach affected. We'd have to have it at the stadium. Might need the stadium today.
Here, I'll take it for you. Sorry, y'all. She said y'all love him, and you won't hum in the picture.
I think y'all need to come closer, and if you'll ever want to be in. I took a little video.
Come in there. Two breakfasts.
That was the most photographic event that we've had. But thank you all, just wait a moment, everybody's getting settled in. Next item on the agenda will be a presentation regarding our Meals on Wheels program.
Good morning.
Good morning, Karen Deagle.
I'm Karen Deagle. I'm CEO of the Senior Resource Association, and it is that time of year again. So, thank you for allowing me to present information about the 2025 Meals on Wheels event, March for Meals event. Our Meals on Wheels programs are dedicated to promoting the health and well-being of seniors in Indian River County. And March is an important month, of course, for Senior Resource Association as we join thousands of other Meals on Wheels programs across America to raise the awareness of senior hunger and isolation. Meals on Wheels is a lifeline to countless older adults in our community, and the number continues to grow. In 2023, Senior Resource Association provided 106,980 meals to hungry and homebound seniors locally. In 2024, we served 144,104 meals. That's a 35% increase. Today, there are still about 510 seniors on the public-funded waitlist. But thanks to philanthropic generosity of our individuals and organizations in this community, we are able to feed all of those seniors while they are on the waitlist for public funding. I never thought that would happen, actually, in the entire time that I've been with Senior Resource Association, which is 19 years. I didn't think that we would ever be able to do that. So again, that generosity from the community has just been overwhelming. Our Home Delivery Meal Program helps alleviate hunger by providing hot nutritious meals delivered by SRA staff and volunteers to clients five days each week with an additional two frozen meals for the weekend. A registered dietitian plans all menus to ensure that it contains the one-third of the daily nutritional value that seniors require. But this program, as you all know, is more than just delivering a hot meal. It's also that daily wellness check. Our visits provide seniors and their families with a sense of security and allow them to live more healthy and independent in their own homes. Sadly, for too many of our seniors, this visit is the only social interaction they experience until a volunteer arrives with tomorrow's meal. Providing more than 600 meals each day could not be accomplished, of course, without the dedication, time, and effort of well over 200 devoted volunteers. And no one can explain the program better than the boots-on-the-ground, wonderful volunteers. So, we'd like to take a moment to show you the impact that Meals on Wheels have on aging friends and neighbors in our community.
We all know people closely in your life that are going through ups and downs. And if you can help people on some of their toughest days, and you're making a difference with Meals on Wheels, you can see it, it's a gift.
When your client tells you that this is the only meal they might have in a day, it really opens your eyes. We're so fortunate in our lives, and to see that, it really puts things in perspective.
If it wasn't for you guys, I wouldn't make it. Between the bread and the meals, you don't know how many times a meal like this has helped us from starving. Going all day with no food and waiting for this.
The best part of volunteering is you get more than you give. Completes your picture of the world you live in. To be able to do this and help people survive, to help people stay in their home, to help people get a nutritious daily meal is really a gift to the giver.
It's a simple place to volunteer. They need volunteers, the people need meals, and it just fit hand in glove, I think, with what I was looking for. We are so fortunate in our lives, and it just makes me happy to be able to do something for someone else. Join us in supporting Meals on Wheels and make a difference in the lives of local seniors.
Thank you all for being here. Thank you all for your support. It's life-changing.
We need to ensure that this critical program can continue to address food insecurity and malnutrition, combat social isolation, enable independence, and improve health for years to come. And of course, you guys can help. So, on March 10th, 12th, and 13th, SRA is hosting the March for Meals again. Wonderful opportunity for public leaders like yourself and members of our community to experience the gratification of delivering a nutritious meal to our homebound seniors. I know many of you, in fact, I think all of you, have actually participated in March for Meals at one time or another. And Commissioner Flesch, I know you're signed up as well for this time, so I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you to each of you for your support now and in the past. And if you're interested, please give us a call. Again, it is on the 10th, 12th, and 13th, two times in Vero Beach and one time up in Sebastian. And again, thank you for allowing, just And again, thank you for allowing just a few minutes to help me share the awareness of Meals on Wheels program, how important it is in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. You know, when the program started, it was, again, aligned with contact as well. And it is the, sometimes for most individuals, it's the only contact that they'll have throughout the day unless they endeavor outward. But I think that the whole element has shifted a bit with the high cost of food, and we heard it right on the testimonials. Without this, I may not have food.
Going back about eight months ago, we were tracking about 10 people signing up a month for Meals on Wheels. We're now tracking 35 individuals a month that are signing up. So, it has a big impact.
It's increasing.
Very much so, yes.
Well, we have great hopes for the economy to improve, but while we're going through this and the high cost of food and availability for some, thank you for all that Meals on Wheels does.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we'll now move on. Sorry about that. We're going to go to any approval of the minutes. There are none. So, now we'll move on to the informational items that do not require any approval. We have the ELAP District 4 appointee, P. D. O'Brien, has relocated, so he has resigned from that position, from Environmental Lands. And another item, it was that, it's actually overwhelming. The folks at State Road 60 Hyundai and the Chirenza Agency have donated a sizable donation to our recreational endeavors so that we can continue to have some nice, pleasant contact. And they wanted to support most of the public endeavors that you see. And I just want to say thank you to State Road 60 Hyundai and the Chirenzo Association.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, I want to thank Commissioner Law for his appointment to ELAP. Mr. Pitts will be a good choice. He's very well-versed in the county, and he's a biologist and all that sort of stuff. So, that's much appreciated. I didn't know if, I'd like Mike, if he could comment on the sponsorship, kind of tell us what we do with it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, everyone. Michael Zito, Deputy County Administrator. So, we have a great relationship with Route 60 Hyundai. They've been with us through the years. They travel under our sponsorship program, which we, staff goes out and solicits sponsorship for team shirts and things that the teams just can't raise money for, sometimes trophies, sometimes it's a citizen assistance program. We call it the CAP account, where we put money into an account for participants who can't afford the fee. I mean, it's just $50 to play baseball for a whole season in Indian River County. We're proud of that, but if you don't have it, we can find it. So, this money is there. With great discretion, I will give Mr. Chirenza great respect for that, for trusting staff in how we utilize these funds, including for food and beverage items to complement certain events, ribbon cuttings, and the like. So, it's a broad spectrum of uses for the money, but it's no different than a lot of the smaller sponsorships that we get. This one is nice because it's a recurring stream of income that we did renew from last year and doing great things with it, so very appreciative. And we have room for more. If anyone else wants to sponsor a program or a team, contact our Parks and Rec office.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And thank, yeah. That's very charitable.
You know, we do, in exchange, if you will, offer some exposure for the sponsors on our electronic signage, on the back of the shirts. So, it is a genuine sponsorship opportunity, much like those who are investing in the Jackie Robinson game through the United Way. It is a wonderful thing to be philanthropic in that regard, but you do get genuine exposure for your business, so we try to make it worthwhile.
Thank you. Is there anyone that wishes to speak regarding anything that's on the agenda that they may not be able to stay for? That's the exclusion of public hearings or any quasi-dedicial matters. And there are two podiums. If anybody wishes to speak at this time, or we can wait until the actual item is up. Seeing none, given ample opportunity, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I would like to pull number nine, F. Foxtrot. Is there anything else?
I was going to pull nine F., so we're both pulling it.
I'll be happy to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, as amended.
Vice Chairman got you on that one, but we'll accept you as a very close second. So, that's approval from Vice Chairman Law, seconded by Commissioner Airman. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I pulled nine, F. Foxtrot, regarding the Children's Services Division acceptance of a donation for the Golden Impact Ceremony. As you're aware, this week, we will have a Golden Impact Ceremony recognizing the shakers and movers in children's services. And many of the organizations that make it happen will be honored. Well, there's a cost to doing business, and an individual came forward and, under J Mac Consultants, I see he's here, so I'm going to ask him to, I want to recognize the fact that he contributed to this great event and wanted it not to be a cost factor for the county. And I would truly appreciate that because it will be a very nice ceremony with his benevolence. Mr. Andros? Mr. Andros, sure, there's a microphone. Mr. Andros contributed several thousand dollars to ensure that the event goes well.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for this. I am happy to do it. What we do in CSAC is very important work, and actually, as a CSAC member, I think the credence goes to the staff. The staff does phenomenal work, makes things better every single day, and is getting this process down to be better stewards of the money. But I am very proud to sponsor this event, and I thank you for allowing me to do it to be a part of something that helps the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Well, with that...
I'd like to speak, Mr. Chairman. I was going to pull the item also. For the community, I'll read the first sentence of the letter about this matter. And this is a donation to IRC Children's Services. "We are pleased to announce that J. A. Mac Consultants LLC will partner with IRC Children's Services as the premier sponsor of the 2025 Golden Impact Awards with a donation of $3,000 designated to IRC Children's Services for the support of Golden Impact Awards. While the generosity may be well-meaning, I cannot support this. The owner of J. A. Mac Consultants should not be, quotes, 'partnering' with IRC Children's Services because he is a member of the CSAC main committee, as he stated. His donating $3,000 to," and this is from the letter, "empower the community services director," unquote, "is entirely inappropriate and potentially can be viewed as self-dealing, which is defined as using a government position to get personal benefits." In this case, attention for his business. He also has a political consulting business, Mac Works, and perhaps undue influence, if you will, on the CSAC committee. Also, it sets, in my opinion, horrific precedent for other advisory boards to county commission. Suppose Mr. Todd Bargnano of Ameron Homes, who is the P&amp;Z Planning and Zoning member at large, offers to have his business, quotes, "partner" with Planning and Zoning and, quotes, "sponsor refreshments or other items for the Planning and Zoning Board members and staff." In my opinion, this kind of activity totally undermines the credibility of any advisory board and should be prohibited. The only donation, quotes, "sought" from any member of any advisory board is his or her time and attention to the matter at hand, and his or her time and attention to the matter at hand should be the only, quotes, "donation accepted." Thank you for the time.
I'm actually stunned. Wow. I guess it's an opinion. I can't support any of your words. That is rather so disingenuous. I don't read any of what you're stating about this, other than just to take the wind out of somebody's benevolence. I guess you don't get it because you're not known for contributions, but I really am at a loss for words.
I get it, sir. I don't think any advisory board member should be making financial contributions in the name of his or her business. You serve as a volunteer position, and you should not be benefiting privately from government service. That's my opinion. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Chairman, I don't see how anybody benefits serving in the volunteer capacity, especially on the Children's Services Advisory Committee, how they benefit. And I would, I would guess, I would ask Commissioner Moss, did you check with the county attorney to see if this is proper or illegal or anything?
It's interesting because we just heard about Hyundai. It's called advertising. A sponsorship is advertising for a business. That's what it is. That was number seven, F., I think. That was an informational item. So, we just talked about this. It's a sponsorship. Sponsorship is for your business. I think business should be kept out of it. You know, we've had, we've come a long way with CSAC. I don't want to jeopardize the neutrality of it. You know, I want to keep, let's keep money away from it. You start accepting gifts, you can have undue influence within the group itself.
I have a point of clarification for my fellow commissioners because, as a business owner, I do sponsor many things in the community. One of the things that we have been considering sponsoring is the Centennial. So, as a commissioner, is myself sponsoring as Marsh Landing or Marsh Bistro the Centennial giving me undue influence on the board? Because to me, it's just supporting what the work is that we're trying to do in the community and allowing events to occur. I believe that, so, I'm curious because if so, I will stand down on said sponsorship and let Michelle know that. But I believe that this came up because in the past, the commission has not wanted to allocate any funds towards the Golden Impact Awards. Now, if we want to allocate funds towards the Golden Impact Awards, that would take this whole situation out of the equation, but we have not wanted to allocate dollars to these types of events, which is why this event was looking for sponsors, which is also why the Centennial is looking for sponsors, which is why the Parks and Recreation looks for sponsors for some of their sports teams and leagues that they do. So, I just want to make sure that if this is something that we are going to have an issue with, that it's applied appropriately across all of the different venues and opportunities in which we seek sponsorship. And then the last thing I'll say is, you know, the Economic Development Council is comprised of many, many different business leaders in the community, and those business leaders sponsor and support many different things that this county does through, you know, different workshops that we do, perhaps providing space, providing refreshments, those types of things. And they are typically given some type of call-out on an agenda, on a flyer, or something of that nature. So, I have no problem if we want to have a no sponsorship policy, but I just want to remind everyone that that means we need to allocate dollars for these things, or they're not going to happen. And maybe that's what we want to do, just not have things. But I do want clarification because I don't want to be seen as trying to seek undue influence by sponsoring the Centennial.
Certainly, I'd be happy to clarify, and I think I said it already. I'm talking about strictly advisory boards to county commission. The Centennial is not for the community. The Centennial does not advise us in any way. The Centennial makes no recommendations to us whatsoever. So, I'm speaking strictly about advisory boards and speaking strictly about members of advisory boards to us donating monetary gifts to the board upon which that individual serves. So, this is a very narrow focus.
Okay. Well, I can understand that, but I think at this point, everybody said their piece, and I'm happy to move approval.
I, you know, well, no, I just want to comment because, you know, Commissioner Moss was on an advisory board, and she was designated at CSAC. And, you know, there was an individual that was providing refreshments while you were on watch. It didn't bother you then, but this is bothering you because it's political. You think it's political, and I find it very disingenuous. You know, someone who contributed to the Sebastian Centennial through a political campaign, you know, you have to, you're picking and choosing what you don't like about other people. I think that's so unfair.
Well, I'm sorry.
To besmirch someone's act of kindness and generosity. I'm trying to figure out the gain that an individual has by doing something nice for an event.
Same thing. We can't accept gifts, so why should advisory boards be accepting gifts? We can't accept gifts unless we declare it, as you know.
No, that's individuals.
We're elected, they're appointed, but we all, we are all served.
They're not elected.
governmental entity.
Well, I appreciate the oversight and always taking a look at it. It's always good to make sure that we aren't providing opportunities in which undue influence may happen. But I don't, I don't feel, and I think what I've said, what I've heard other commissioners is that I don't, we don't feel that's the case here. I think it's a goodwill gesture, so I've made a motion, and there's a second. So, I'd like to go ahead and ask the chair to call the question, if possible.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, this was a hold item. Thank you. Opposed?
Opposed, nay.
Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Moss dissenting. That was an unanticipated but unique conversation. Wow. All right. We'll move on to public items. The next item is a public hearing. It's quasi-dedicial in nature. It's on the agenda, and it's a request to amend the zoning ordinance and accompanying zoning map for approximately 8.0 acres from...
for approximately 8.0 acres from CG to general commercial to medical and medical district. This is a quasi judicial proceeding. The parties involved are Inney River County and the Schwerin Realty, also known as the applicant. At this point, I need to ask commissioners to disclose any ex parte communication, site visits, or independent investigations. I'll begin with the left.
No site visits. I do drive past it during the normal course of my day. And I do have a traffic study from Kim Lee Horn for this property. And thank you, Mr. Balter and staff. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, sir.
None.
None that I'm aware of. I'll next confirm that each commissioner can have an open mind and is able to base their decision on the evidence presented and applicable law.
Cannon will.
Cannon will.
Cannon will.
Cannon will.
Cannon will.
Thank you. At this point, I'll open a public hearing. And I'll ask the clerk to swear in any and all witnesses collectively who wish to speak regarding this hearing. If you anticipate speaking, please be sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll now have a presentation by county staff. I don't know.
Good morning, Board.
You got the lead.
I'm Cindy Thurman, Senior Planner for Long Range Planning. As was stated, we have a rezoning request from CG to Medical, MED. The property contains eight acres and is located on the east side of Highway US-1, south of 41st Street, in a residentially mixed-use area. The property is currently zoned CG, general commercial zoning, and is undeveloped. The purpose of this request is to rezone the property to MED, Medical Zoning District, and dealt to site with uses permitted in the MED districts such as multiple family housing. The area of the county features a blend of commercial and warehouse properties, residential and undeveloped commercially zoned land, all lying within the urban service area. Picture at the zoning map. You can see here, the area all crosshatched in the gold is also zoned MED. Look here at the future land use map. You can see that this property is highlighted, is located in a established future, commercial industrial, future land use node. Existing CG general commercial future zoning district is designed for general retail commercial uses with no warehousing. It's intended to provide for development of general retail sales and selected service activities. CG zoning district is now intended to provide for heavy commercial activities, such as outside to commercial service uses or heavy repair services. Look at the development standards as you compare the CG and the MED requested zoning shows that the only differences really are the size setbacks and the minimum open space requirements. The MED proposed zoning is intended to provide a variety of uses which support a major medical facility. It protects such a major medical facility from encroachment by land uses which may have an adverse effect on operation, potential expansion of the facility, prohibits land uses that could cause adverse effect on neighboring properties because of noise, vibration, odors, smoke, traffic, and other physical manifestations, and allows for accessory uses in support of principal uses. The rezoning request is consistent with the commercial industrial future land use nodes, as I showed you earlier, on the future land use node. It is in the sea of red there, so is part of an established commercial industrial future land use node. The commercial industrial future land use designation is intended to provide areas for development of industrial and commercial uses. It is located in areas with suitable levels of service and infrastructure for urban and development scale, located along major transportation routes and separated from residential areas, and no future land use amendment change is proposed as part of this request. As part of all the review criteria for rezonings, we have to analyze everything as part of the criteria in 902.123, items A through K, and whether or not the proposed amendment is in conflict with any applicable portion of the Land Development Regulations. No conflicts within the applicable Land Development Regulations for the requested MED zoning designation are present. Item B is inconsistent with the elements of the comprehensive plan. We do find that it meets the future aim as land use element. Objective one policies 1.17, 1.18, and 1.43. Item C is inconsistent with the existing proposed land uses. Again, it does, there is no future land use change amendment request as part of this rezoning. Item D is in compliance with the adopted county thoroughfare plan. It does meet this criteria. The main access for the site is from 41st Street, an urban collector. Item E does generate traffic which would decrease levels of service as adopted. It does meet the criteria. All roadway segments within the area of influence would operate at acceptable level of service under proposed MED zoning. Item F is the subject change conditions exist to warrant an amendment. It does meet this criteria. Economic conditions have evolved, make it increasingly suitable for uses permitted with the MED district. This is particularly due to the existing MED zoning directly to the east of the subject property. Item G, with this request, decrease levels of service established for sanitary sewer, potable water, solid waste, drainage, and recreation. We find that it meets the criteria. The applicant may be required to pay connection and customary fees. A more detailed concurrency review will be conducted during the development review process. As a reminder, we are required to review everything against Section 910.07 of the Land Development Regulations for conditional concurrency review based upon the most intense use. The CG and the MED both have the same most, they're equitable, under retail and medical office use for the most intense uses generated. Item H, the result in the significant adverse impacts on the natural environment. The site is currently undeveloped and vacant, densely vegetated. When development is proposed, a more detailed environmental analysis based on the site, specific development proposal will be conducted. Item I, the result in the orderly logical development patterns, specifically identifying any negative effects on such pattern. We believe it meets this criteria, that the request will facilitate a more orderly and logical pattern by aligning the zoning patterns in the area, particularly with the adjacent MED zoned parcel and the nearby commercial and residential developments, supporting overall cohesive land use strategy in the area. Item J, in conflict in the public interest and is in harmony with the purpose and interest of the Land Development Regulation. Staff has found no adverse impacts to the public welfare and finds that the request aligns with the purpose, and intent of the Land Development Relations. And item K, any other matters that may be deemed appropriate in review in consideration of proposed amendments, such as police protection, fire protection, emergency medical services. All concurrency mandated facilities have adequate capacity to accommodate the most intense use under the proposed zoning district. So in conclusion, the requested MED zoning district is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies as previously stated of the county's adopted comprehensive plan and LDRs. It's compatible with the surrounding area and strategically beneficial for the community, supports the continued development of vital medical hub, meets current anticipated land use needs, and does so in a manner that is environmentally responsible, and the infrastructure is compatible. Supported by staff and at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on Thursday, September 12, 2024, the commission voted unanimously to approve the request to recommend approval. Staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve this request to rezone the subject property from CG to MED. And we're available for any questions.
Does anyone have a question to staff? Would that be Commissioner Moss?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, it's actually not a question, but since you gave me the Kim Lee Horn, thank you for providing that, the Kim Lee Horn traffic impact statement. I'll offer that information here. This is just one sentence from it, from the cover letter, dated May 1, 2024, and I'll read it into the record. As shown, the proposed zoning designation would result in a net decrease of daily project traffic, net decrease of AM peak hour traffic, and net decrease in PM peak hour project traffic when compared to the trip generation potential of the existing zoning designation. Numbers, these are estimated. This is page two, table one. And this is for the existing land use. Would be 34,339. With the change that's being requested, it would decrease to 5,133. I know that traffic is a very important concern to our community. And again, I thank Mr. Balter and team for providing this information. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add one thing to that. The reason for the decrease is because the actual zoning category is considered a downzoning for the actual allowable uses that are in that zoning category. So that's why it is a decrease, just so you have some more background.
Thank you.
So it's methodology as opposed to information that has been added, deleted, subtracted, minimalized in any way?
Correct.
Thank you for the clarification.
Chairman? Chris, I didn't see a lot of difference in the zoning CG to this medical. They're both in most intense use, 80,000 square feet. Is there any major differences in it really, per se?
So the major difference is that in general commercial allows for a more intense form of commercial. In medical zoning, it doesn't allow those more intense commercial uses. It actually is considered a downzoning that is lesser uses to more support the medical.
That's what I figured, but I didn't, I didn't read all that into it. But I think this is a good choice because it's on the backside of the medical zone. It's almost to 11th Drive that we just created, which puts it in there. And, I mean, it's, I don't see any impact to Hussey Schuman Park or anything. So I think it's a, it's actually pleasant to see a really good zoning come through, a good zoning change once in a while. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
Well, we have to.
Oh, that's right. We still, we got to get out of the thing. I'm sorry. My apologies.
An early warning, but we still have more work to be done. Okay. Is there any other questions at this time? Does the applicant have any questions of staff? Of staff?
Good morning. Rebecca Grohl Hall, MBV Engineering, on behalf of the applicant. I don't have questions for staff. I just want to thank them for their assistance in bringing this to the agenda and providing the well-rounded staff review of this project. So I am asking your approval here today, and I'm happy answering any questions you might have.
At this time, does any of the commissioners or staff, any questions of the applicant? Seeing none, looking for any input from the attending public. If you were sworn in, please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Tom Sullivan, 4187 West 16th Square. I was just looking here. I was here before you, before you. You were here, okay, before you. So I have a little sense of history of this. Now, the one point that I would like to ask about the traffic study, and you said there was a downgrade. When the, I didn't understand the methodology, and I've talked to Ryan. I want to find out the methodology of how the study is done. An office building would have traffic going in and out during the eight operating hours or 10. A plant, a community that has housing in it usually has traffic coming out from 7:30 to 9:00. Usually, there's traffic going in from 5:00 to 6:00. That's the old theory of like, do you realize more people? You know, this is one of those statistical things. More people drowned in water that's not over their head. You would never guess that because you'd stand up, but they put their hands in drains, they slip in the shower. I think the traffic methodology is used like this also. And what I'm saying is, just to give you a little highlight, and I don't want to bore you, but when you're going east on 41st Street and you're coming across US-1, there is no left-hand turn on US-1. There is only one lane on US, on 41st Street, on Old Dixie Highway coming across. Now, what happens, okay, if someone wants to make a left or someone wants, they can't make that left until the westbound traffic breaks. We don't have a turn signal right there. So now what we have is a backup that, in the morning, and I talked, it was very interesting. This morning, I happened to run into the fellow who handles the sewer pumps. And I was just talking to him. I said, boy, a lot of stuff in the neighborhood. He goes, yeah, this is getting real crowded. And he said, you know, one of the things I'm concerned about is the tracks. And he said, oh, I've been stuck that way a few times. I didn't even think it would happen yet. So what I'm saying is, I would like to know, and I would like a more accurate accounting of how we do the methodology for traffic. Because we seem to keep adding this on. Now, I think all of you are aware, if you go onto 11th, okay, Quail Valley just got approved with 272 parking spaces. Below that, GHO got approved for 72 townhomes. They're obviously going to carry. Okay, so now, we're taking, now, this is what I find funny. That whole area, which we talked about was, when this went way back before you guys were on the board, that whole area was going to have two apartment buildings in the back when Pulte first came in. And those two apartment buildings, according to Dr. Rosenberg, who was the president, three presidents ago at the hospital, okay, he was, he was so enthused because, you know what those hospitals, you know what those apartments were going to be? Residences for the workers at the hospital. Recently, that piece of property was sold, 12 acres, was sold to Verity of Indiana, okay? A one-bedroom apartment there will cost $2,000. They go up to three bedrooms. I don't want to tell you what the three bedroom costs. But I can tell you this. There ain't too many hospital workers unless you have MD behind your name that are living in there. Now, I know I'm going off the track here. I would just like you all to think about slowing this down a little until everything is built out. Because you're not going to have a chance to do it after that. And I don't know what type of traffic relief you can put on 41st Street. And that's all I'm saying. I look at these traffic reports, and I don't understand the methodology. Because if they're basing it on a long period of time, that's not the way that people come and go. People come and go in very short intervals, particularly when we're taking the entire medical area. And this was another interesting fact that I would like to just bring up. That, a lot of that land was developed under administrative approval without even coming to you, like Quail Valley. Did Quail Valley ever come up here? No. I mean, so what happened was, this fell into the planning and zoning people's hands, and they made administrative decisions over the use of medical land. You never knew about that. They made that decision. And I'm saying, I elected you guys to make those decisions. I elected you guys to sit here and decide that. Not to all of a sudden say, this is medical land, and under a fiat that planning and zoning has, they can decide that Quail Valley fits that criteria. You know, I just think it's true. Now, any, the other point I'd like to make is, when things become judicial in nature, that they're judicial in nature. And I think the first incident that occurred today, I've been on a lot of boards in my life. I was in, I was in college administration. We always referred things to judicial, okay? I think the first conversation that occurred today, it was not about personalities. It was about separation, okay? And it was a quasi, it was a judicial affair. But that's another issue. That's another issue. Okay, sorry. I'm talking about the donation. You know, everybody can have different opinions.
Let's stay on point, on topic.
Okay, all right. So getting back to my point, I don't think the road improvements can be made or can be made as quickly as the developments are. We have, I think, Mr. Fleisch, you're aware of this. The Costa Point is not built out. We have, I think, Mr. Fleisch, you're aware of this, the Costa Point is not built out yet. Matter of fact, there's only four people, four homes there, okay? The apartments that are 287 are not occupied yet, okay? GHO has not built its 72 homes yet. Quail Valley has not put its new facility, which has 272 parking spaces, which means there's going to be some people there, okay? And now we're looking to turn, which I think is rather peculiar, CL back to MED. We took all of the MED and turned it to CL, and now we're going to take this little portion. And the only reason for that is because, under the MED, one of the conditions is they can change and put in, okay, apartments. All right? Now, everybody, you know, people think, I was at the P&amp;Z meeting the other night, I have to share this with you, and I know, I don't want to bore you, but after the meeting was over, I was talking to Susan Prado about signage. And Mr. Day called me a groupie. I said, "I'm a groupie? I'm a groupie because, why, I go to these meetings? Because I try to express my opinion on behalf of citizens? Because I express my own opinion?" You know, and, and I just, at this moment now, I'm a little annoyed. I first got involved in this nonsense because I moved from the island, I drove down, and I went to make a, a left turn over the bridge, I saw a blinking arrow, and it said, the little sign, this big, said, "Yield to oncoming traffic." I went to Curry, and I said, "That's stupid." I said, "I'm a basketball coach, I've traveled all over the country. You go into a single lane with a blinking light, and you're supposed to know to stop?" Well, after the first person was killed, the Colonel on his bike, okay, who his friends called the mothership, I went and I called Canado at FDOT. Oh, talk to your local people. Well, I'm just saying, this is how I got involved in this. I don't want to be looked at like, "I got no, I got no dog in this fight. I'm not making any money out of anything." I come here to give my opinion, like I go to the P&amp;Z and give my opinion. And I know that, Joe, you respect my opinion.
I do respect it, but I think we're a little off point right now.
I, I know, but I'm just telling you how I got involved.
Let's keep this the quasi-d judicial hearing that it deserves to be. Thank you, sir.
I didn't want to be involved in this stuff, okay? All of a sudden, I started coming to these meetings, and I started seeing long-range plan, long-range planning was dinner tonight.
Mr. Sullivan, can we have this conversation at another time?
Okay, but I like it on the, I like, I like it on the record.
It's not on point? Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Welcome to the community.
I'd just like to clarify that the Quail Valley was not administratively approved. It was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, just to clarify the record.
That's correct. Thank you for that. There were several inaccuracies that were expuded, and that's why we need to have that discussion at another point and maintain this topic. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question of staff. Thank you. Either staff.
We, we had the opportunity to have questions of staff. We'll...
It's based on a comment that was made. It's an ongoing meeting, I think. It's a very simple question. It's just what triggers a study for a traffic signal? I mean, how much development, does it have to be within any given area? And who keeps track of that?
So it's a signal warrant analysis, and I will let, actually, the engineering department answer that. We have the traffic engineer, the county's traffic engineer in the back of the room, so...
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I'm Joseph DeFranzo, currently the county engineer, but also reviewing and helping the traffic staff. And as Mr. Balter said, there are warrants that have to be met prior to the installation of a, of a traffic signal. There's different warrants based on data that we collect to analyze, and not only our staff, but consultants do the same thing, that may trigger the need for an unsignalized intersection to become a traffic signalized intersection.
What would trigger it in this particular area?
Well, there's already, you mean, at US-1 or other locations?
This location that's been discussed, you know, 41st Street going east and all the development that's occurred on that street.
So there are, there are already traffic signals at US-1 and Indian River Boulevard.
Right, we're talking about...
Yeah, the intersections along that segment would be driveway intersections.
I think we were talking about the intersection with US-1 and 41st Street.
Yes, that's a...
In terms, in terms of making a left-hand turn.
So, so is this a specific question regarding a flashing yellow arrow indication?
Something, something to make the turning of left at there easier.
So, so there are also data that trigger whether you need an exclusive left turn indication or a protected permissive. That's what a yellow flashing arrow indicates. When the intersection is, the right of way is given to that direction of travel, you can make a left turn if you yield to oncoming traffic. That's a permissive movement. But if the left turn volumes increase so high, based on the oncoming traffic, it would become a protected movement. So there's an amount of time where you have a green arrow, and then after that, you can no longer turn left.
Thank you.
Mr. DeFranzo, so can you clarify, so for this rezoning, the actual analysis for any development on this property would happen if somebody submitted a site plan for the development of the property, they would be required to do a traffic study, is that correct?
Correct. And the, the information that was provided was a statement indicating that based on the existing zoning versus the proposed zoning, there would be trips generated, and they used the manual, the trip generation manual to come up with.
And as part of that, when they do the traffic study, could you just clarify on the record, that they take into account all the development that has, that exists today, the traffic volumes that exist today, the development that's been approved? In other words, that they have, they've, they've invested, they've got approved, they count that into what they call background traffic, is that correct?
Correct.
And then they evaluate the proposed development, the impact of the development on the roadway network, the segments, and the signals?
Yes, and the early first step is for either the traffic consultant to, to submit a methodology, that's our methodology, that they propose to follow to do the actual traffic impact study, and we have to approve that first.
Who approves that?
We do, traffic staff, yes.
Is it a traffic engineer, a PE?
That's preparing the methodology?
That reviews it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify for the board, the process, because I think, just, I don't want, this is a rezoning, it's a down zoning, as mentioned, but my, my point is, when the development is proposed, at that time, a more granular traffic study will be completed to evaluate the potential impact to both the roadway network and any signalization that would occur. As was done in the case, it was mentioned earlier about Quail Valley. Recently, there was a traffic study related to that approval that P&amp;Z took into consideration. Just want to clarify that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the input. Next, we'll have any final presentations or argument, if any, by county staff? Do you have any? Thank you. By the applicant?
No.
At this point, we'll want to ensure that all documents and tangible evidence have been admitted and to evidence and are in the hands of the clerk. Madam Clerk?
I have the traffic study.
And that's the document from the result from the traffic?
The Kimble Horn, yeah, the Kimble Horn traffic study and cover letter.
Was that not in the original package?
That was in the submission on the application.
Okay. Thank you. As far as any county staff agenda materials, they're automatically admitted into evidence unless there are any other objections. All evidence will be submitted to the clerk. At this point, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Lou staff approved, Lou staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Airman, seconded by Commissioner Moss. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
If I could ask, Cindy, how much experience do you have in this rezoning process?
How much experience, what do you mean?
Thank you. And Chris?
How many years?
Yes.
I have over, right now, 13 years.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I've been doing this since 1997.
And we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
No further.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. We've been motion for a quick recess. We're going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. The meeting will now be called back to order. The next item is eleven eight-two, which is the county initiated request to amend the five-year capital improvements program for the period fiscal twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-eight to twenty twenty-nine.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Chris Balter, Planning and Development Services Director. We have before you today the county issued requests to amend the capital improvements element, the CIE, more specifically, the capital improvements program. Background, so in nineteen ninety, Indian River County adopted its comprehensive plan on February thirteenth. The capital improvements element, the CIE, and more importantly, the CIP must be updated annually. State law allows amendments to CIP through a simplified ordinance process. This update ensures compliant with state regulations. The CIE/CIP adoption process is different from the standard amendments. It requires only one public hearing, no planning and zoning commission review, and no state agency review. The highlighted changes are updating existing revenue information, updated revenue projections, updated Appendix A, which is the Indian River County five-year schedule of capital improvements, the CIP. Appendix A, the five-year CIP for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-eight to twenty twenty-nine. The total five-year expenditure increased by five percent from four hundred and eighty-nine million, ten thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight last year to five hundred and fourteen million, six hundred and forty-seven, eight forty-four, proposed. The projected revenues will match the projected expenses. The level of service standards will be maintained, and as always, the transportation is the largest category of the total expenditures. Before you, you'll see the comparison from the last five-year CIP to this year's CIP, the differences, which is about twenty-five million. Some major projects in the budgets, the coastal engineering is fifteen point nine seven million. Major projects are beach renourishment and reef installation. Conservation aquifer recharge is fourteen point three five million. Habitat restoration and public access. Emergency services, seventy-one point five million, which is new fire station and fleet upgrades. Building and facility services, which is our new department. Twenty-nine point two-six million, library renovations and office upgrades. Law enforcement and corrections, thirty-three point four-eight million. Facility expansions and security upgrades are the notable ones. Recreation open space is forty-six point eleven million, which includes upgrades to parks and aquatic center improvements. Sanitary sewer and potable water, hundred and twenty-two point zero-five million, main water and sewer upgrades. Solid waste is landfill expansions at thirty-three point four-five million. Continued is storm water at three point four million, which we are doing a master plan in water quality improvements. And then the transportation is a hundred and forty-five point zero-eight million, which includes road widening, sidewalks, bike lanes, just to name some of their major projects. Summary, we have increased forecasted revenue. Our level in services standards are maintained. Our CIE is consistent and CIP with the comprehensive plan. The amendment aligns with the comprehensive plan policies. It follows the capital improvement element policies, one point one through one point one-one. Ensures all projects over a hundred thousand are included as per policy one point one-nine. And the recommendation is the board of county commissioners approve the updated update to the five-year capital improvements program for periods of FY twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and supporting data and analysis of the capital improvements element of the comprehensive plan by adopting the proposed ordinance. With that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of staff? Everybody's got their own microphone. Questions of staff?
Mr. Chair, one thing I'll add is that in years past, obviously depending on the economy, this is subject to change as well.
Absolutely. These are projections, and we're looking at do twenty twenty-nine.
Correct.
Just think of what people were thinking in twenty seventeen, as we were unfortunately hit with the COVID event. That changed the course of many opportunities and projects. With that, this is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Y'all didn't come for this item. Having given equal and ample opportunity, I'll close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairman Law, seconded by Commissioner Adams. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next item is quasi judicial in nature. And that would be... The request by Glendale Baptist Church for special exception use and site plan approval for a grade six through ten private school. This is a quasi judicial proceeding. The parties in the proceeding are Indian River County and Glendale Baptist Church Incorporated, also known as the applicant. Before we get started, I need to ask each of the commissioners to disclose any ex parte communications, site visits, or independent investigations, and I will begin with the left.
None that I know of. Nope.
None that I'm aware of.
None. None that I'm aware of, sir.
Thank you. And I'll also ask you if you can confirm that you have an open mind and are able to base your decision on the evidence presented and applicable law.
Cannon will. Cannon will.
Cannon will.
Cannon will. Cannon will.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. I'm going to ask the clerk to swear in anybody who anticipates speaking at this hearing. You need to be sworn in if you anticipate to be speaking at any time during the hearing. Madam Clerk.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll begin with a presentation.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Patrick Murphy, Chief of Long Range Planning. We're here today to discuss the Glendale Baptist Church private school special exception use. The property you'll see here in the red rectangle is located on the west side of Fifty-Eighth Avenue Southwest. It is south of First Street Southwest and north of Fifth Street Southwest. Property is bordered by A-one agricultural zoning to the north, south, and west. And across Fifty-Eighth Avenue to the east is PD zoning and RS-three single-family residential zoning. And all the exhibits that you'll see before you, the north orients to the top of your exhibit. Aerial map shows the existing school laid out on the land. To the north is undeveloped vacant land. To the south and west are large acreage, single-family home sites. Across Fifty-Eighth Avenue Southwest, with its four-lane divided highway and a canal, is the Citrus Springs Village Plan Development and the Hammock Lakes Plan Development. Your site plan shows the church in the blue polygon, existing church. There's a cell tower compound in the far west of the site. It's not owned by the church that leases it, it's just there for posterity to show you on the map. The existing ponds are in the green polygons. The plan on this site, there is no additional buildings being added. All the schools will be, the school grades will be an interior buildout inside the church. So there's no expansion of impervious areas. The only impervious they'll have is there's nine existing gravel spaces that will be concreted, and an existing dirt drive that'll be considered or created into marl for emergency access. So the increase is de minimis, and the ponds will not need to be increased whatsoever. Traffic circulation shows a full access existing driveway in the very southeast corner of the site. In the northeast corner is the emergency access. There is no need for a traffic impact study on the site. It did not trip the minimum threshold for requiring one. It was less than half of what that threshold would be. The engineer did show a vehicle stacking plan that would stack a minimum of twenty vehicles on site, previous to the drop-off point. Landscape plan, as part of the specific land use criteria, the project is required to have a twenty-foot wide type-C buffer along all property lines. In the far west, there is existing vegetation that's very dense that goes above and beyond this requirement. The remainder of the property lines do have existing trees along them, and they will be planting additional trees and shrubbery in the gaps to create that type-C buffer. There's also numerous trees on site that are all going to stay in place, as there's no expansion of any buildings. Improvements in other conditions, the project will construct an emergency access at the northeast portion of the site with a stabilized path to the facility. Should be noted that educational centers in the A-one zoning district must adhere to the specific land use criteria in section nine seventy-one point one-four-four of the county's land development regulations. Happy to report the proposed plans comply with all seven of the criteria listed in this code section for such items as site selection, increased building setbacks, landscape buffers, and adequate parking. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at their regularly scheduled meeting on January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. Planning staff recommends that the BCC grant special exception use approval for the Glendale Christian six-through-ten private school with the conditions listed below. Those conditions are a formal review of the life safety plan shall be conducted by the Indian River County Building Division and must be approved prior to issuance of a change of occupancy permit to convert the existing building into a school. The maximum student enrollment shall not exceed seventy students. And any future request to increase the student enrollment, add additional grade levels, or to construct new principal use buildings may require additional special exception approvals. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. The applicants are also in attendance.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? From the dais? The applicant? Any questions of staff?
For the record, Rebecca Growhall, MBV Engineering, I am sworn in, and we represent the applicant. I don't have questions for staff. I just wanted to thank them for their analysis and bringing this project forward through the approval process. I do have members of the church here today, as well as the school, who can speak to any questions you might have regarding operations. But they're very excited about this as an expansion of their existing school facilities by allowing them to move up into some of the upper grades that they currently don't offer now. With that, again, I ask for your approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. So that would conclude your presentation at this point. Does anybody have any questions of the applicant? Moving on, I'd like to open it up to the general public. And if any member of the public, if you've been duly sworn in, and if you wish to speak on this matter, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Having given ample opportunity, we'll then move on. Do we have any final presentation by staff?
No, sir.
By the applicant?
None.
I will ensure that all the documents are tangible evidence, if any, have been admitted and into evidence and are in the hands of the clerk of the court. Madam Clerk? County staff agenda items will also be automatically admitted into evidence unless there is any objection. Seeing none, I'll now close the public hearing. And everyone has their own individual microphone.
Madam Chair. May I have approval?
We have a motion by Vice Chairman Law, seconded by Commissioner Adams. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried five-oh. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you for the presentation. We'll now move on to public notice items. Counselor?
Commissioners, I just wanted to give you notice that there's gonna be a public hearing and consideration of an ordinance at the next meeting on February, would be March eleventh, and that is of the camping and sleeping on county property ordinance, which is required by state law. I'm just gonna go ahead and read this ordinance title. An ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, creating section six of chapter three oh six titled prohibition of public camping or sleeping within county buildings or on its grounds, street, sidewalks, right-of-way, and other public property, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Counselor. And now we'll be moving on to Counselor's items. And the first county attorney item is item fourteen A-alpha, which is amendment number one to the service agreement for Southeast Florida Behavioral Health Network for administration of opioid settlement proceeds.
Commissioners, back in May of last year, this board approved a service agreement with Southeast Florida Behavioral Health Network to basically administer opioid settlement funds. This was required by the state because of the size of our county. We were not allowed to get those funds distributed directly to us. But this board did determine who the funds would be allocated to. So you did enter into a service agreement with Southeast Behavioral. Unfortunately, all the details about how it would be administered and the checks actually distributed to providers, there just wasn't a full meeting of the minds on how that was gonna work. And so basically, that's what this amendment to this service agreement does. It allows Southeast Behavioral to get a five percent administrative fee, because they were basically given the monies by the state, but not really the staff or resources to distribute the money. So at this point, the monies are kind of sitting there, not distributed. So staff supports this amendment. I think it would, it'll be, the providers will be very happy, because the monies will get distributed. And I also know that Amanda Busman from Southeast Behavioral is here, in case the board has any questions about her. I mean, questions to her. Sorry.
Thank you, Counselor. And I will say that we missed a step there. Amanda came to the Public Safety Council, and that's where this was all vetted out. This was a moving target when it first came out, whether, what the amounts would be, or how the distribution would take place. I want to thank Amanda for all the tremendous background work that had to be done, and I don't believe that it was ever discussed at the Public Safety Council as far as the burden of appointment and distribution, as the settlement was actually, again, a moving target. And we were behind the eight ball to get it distributed. It came back to the, after all that work had been done, it came to this commission, and we moved it forward. That I don't believe that Southeast believed that how much work this was actually going to encumber their limited staff, Amanda. So, yes, if she's able to, I'd like her to talk about it as well, just to ensure that everybody's aware of all the hard work, as you invited.
Thank you, yes. I appreciate Amanda very much for helping us get this before you.
Good morning, commissioners. Amanda Busman, Chief of Network Integrity at Southeast Florida Behavioral Health Network. Yes, this was very trying. It was very, with the change of county attorneys in the middle of it, there was some confusion about who was going to administer the funds. You guys would like us to manage the funds. We had written the original agreement for you to manage the funds, so there was a lot of confusion, and I think Jennifer and I have hashed that out, and, you know, we're willing to do that for you. willing to do that for you. As the experts in our area for behavioral health, we have been in contact with all the appointees for the funding from the first year. The Public Safety Committee will meet for any ongoing allocations that are done, which will come through your, through this meeting to you, for you to make decisions about how that funding will be administered, and then we will have staff that stays on top of the reporting and reviewing of those finances and making sure that it's done appropriately and reported to the state appropriately.
Can you explain a little bit that it's not just about taking a large check and cutting into pieces and getting it over to this location so it can be distributed to the appropriate recipients?
Yes, the opioid settlement funding is only approved for certain uses related to substance use disorder and the improvement of someone's life related to that. So, all of that needs to be verified, any funding that is used. What we'll do with our agency is they will have to submit documentation to support, either data or financial statements, receipts. However the funding is used, I think one of the approved uses for some of the funding at this time would be for housing, so we would be looking to see what that cost was and looking at the reports come from Treasure Coast Homeless Services Council to make sure that that housing is being used, one for individuals that are, have a diagnosis of substance use disorder or co-occurring disorder for all the Florida statutes and how it's to be distributed. So, that's part of what our agents will be doing, down to every dollar. Our CFO is very particular about that. DCF is very particular about how the funding is spent, so we will make sure that it all is monitored and reported appropriately.
It is a lot of work, and you're going to have to add to staff and location and ensure that it's done properly for the appropriate decisions, for transparency-
Absolutely.
-and impact effectiveness.
Yes, we'll assign a staff member that will monitor these contracts for you, and however you would like it reported to the Public Safety. It's a quarterly meeting, so they will report there at the council meeting every quarter on how the funding is being utilized and spent. The good thing about the opioid settlement funding is there's no cutoff. It rolls over from year to year, so anything that's unused will just roll to the very next year, and we'll just keep pushing it forward until it's used the way that the county has decided. Today, the Tax Watch report come out on the managing entities. I encourage you all to read it. I can share it with Jennifer if she would like, and to see if you have questions about what a managing entity does and how we administer funds for behavioral health services. So, I started reading it briefly before I walked in here, and it looked pretty good to me, but just in case you're curious about all the different types of funding that we have oversight over.
And just as a reminder, today's decision is going forward. We're looking at this for the next 16 years, or 17 years, as far as what's happening with the funding, but today is for today.
Right, and just to clarify, this kind of is a catch-up. The term, we pushed it out a little bit, but the term really just go to the end of our fiscal year there, this year, September 30th, 2025. I think this is a good blueprint for how we want to go forward, but there will be additional monies coming that will need to be allocated, so we can bring back an amendment to that effect.
But the decision and the distribution of the settlement will be a longstanding operation. That's, I just wanted to-
That's certainly what we intend.
Yes, ma'am.
Many years, it's an 18-year agreement.
It's an 18-year allocation of funding, yes.
Well, thank you.
Of course. Any questions?
So with that, Mr. Chairman, the County Attorney's Office recommends the board approve amendment one to the Southeast Behavioral Service Agreement.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I'll add that, just for the record, this is a settlement from the opioid plague that literally plagued all Americans, and this is a settlement that is not taxpaying dollars. With that, I move approval.
Second. That's a motion by Vice Chairman Law, second by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item under Attorney's Matters is the Indian River County Boards and Committees' Updated Annual Member Reappointment for 2025. Counselor?
Commissioners, thank you. This is, our office is bringing back to you an item that came to you in January about consideration of reappointments to your various boards and committees. And just to kind of give you a little bit of background, the committee monitor that we just resumed this role in the fall is supposed to go through a process, and there's deadlines pursuant to a resolution that you all adopted on how this is supposed to work. Back in, you know, in October every year, they're supposed to contact members whose appointments are up to see if they want to be reappointed, and then make a list, bring those reappointments back to you. If you choose not to reappoint, it would create a vacancy that then gets published, and so on. So, there is more of a process that we'll get back to this year, but we're trying to play catch-up, and so what happened last time was we brought those reappointments to you, and then there was a discussion, and you made reappointments to two of your committees. But then there was an interest on the board to kind of hold up and consider, kind of open this up and encourage more new applications, new applicants, try to get new blood on these boards and committees. And so we did do that. We did a broad advertisement encouraging members of the public and interested persons to apply for these various boards and committees. And you can see when you look at the item, we are showing you that there's new applicants for these various boards and committees. But just to clarify what we're asking for today, we're asking you to go ahead and finish up the task that's laid out in that resolution of what your process is, which is to make a decision on whether you want to reappoint to these various boards, the members that are asking to be reappointed. And if you choose not to, then we can bring back, or when the vacancy is created, we can bring back those boards and committees in a more methodical way to you, but I'm asking if, for purposes of keeping this orderly, that we stick with the task, which is to make a decision on whether you want to reappoint the members that have asked to be reappointed. Also, I kind of, part of my reasoning for keeping it to that is, as you can see, there's a lot of new applicants to some of these various committees, but there is a vetting that may need to be done on some of them. Some of them may need to have certain qualifications or fit certain categories. So, again, if we could just go through these committees and you could make a decision on the reappointments, I would appreciate that.
Well, Counselor, I understand the challenge because we do have some vacancies as well and a rather significant number of applicants, and it is a long-term process to vet them out to ensure that they're not capable but qualified, and there's no prohibitions in their dossier to serve in this voluntary capacity. But when we're looking at recertifying the other members, there may be an applicant that would be best suited, so that, it just adds a little twist to it by approving who we have or not approving who we have. And again, the commissioners have another challenge too, because at this point, where they're free to do it at any time, for any reason, they have their own appointees, designees that they have made, so this would also be an opportunity for them to do that as well. As a point of clarification, that all, regardless of whether someone is appointed or reappointed until otherwise replaced, they still have the luxury and privilege to serve in the capacity until they're replaced. Is that correct?
That is correct. Under your code, these, even if you did not reappoint them, they would serve until their successor is appointed.
And we anticipate having the second wave of the evaluation for the committees at the very next meeting?
Yes.
Or the one to follow. Dr. Moore, I realize that there are a lot of applications, and not all of them have an earmark for any one specific committee, so I know you have some work to do, but, so no pressure, but I just wanted to point that out because although it's not likely, if there are committee meetings, that those members can still continue to serve if not appointed or reappointed.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes.
Question. Okay, just so for clarification, we are being asked today to focus on the appointees that are up for renewal.
That's right.
And then we'll see what is open or not open based on that, and then we'll come back with, I don't know however you're going to format it, a spreadsheet or something, good lord, like a giant diagram, flowchart, but about who qualifies for specific positions, because like on affordable housing, we do have a vacancy, but it's very specific as to who can fill that. Okay. Do we have, for the at-large members on some of these committees, they are not all bound by the same term, correct? Like, I believe CSAC at-large is only for a certain set of time, and then you have to roll off. It can't be extended. But like the EDC at-large member is basically in perpetuity until we or they make a decision that they no longer want to serve, just for clarification.
Exactly. Some, your CSAC, you've, the board by ordinance has actually put in some term limits, but that is not the case for, across the board, for at-large members unless, so there, you could do it, but it's not the case currently.
I just raised that for maybe, not today's meeting. I do not want to confuse the already confusing reorganization that we're doing here, but we might want to think in the future, like next year when this comes up, about possibly aligning some of those at-large members. So it's kind of consistent. It's a little confusing right now. I don't have an issue with anybody, but they do tend to exist in that specific position forever and ever and ever.
And I have gotten comments from various commissioners with interest to kind of look at some of those, to create some more guidelines, and you actually have a section in your code that deals with the boards, that you could set some, you know, broad parameters on, or put rules into place that would be a good place to do that.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Well, with that, Counselor, you have any-
Chairman, if I would, I'm going to kind of expand on what Commissioner Adams said a little bit before we get started on this, but first of all, I need to ask the county attorney, are we, are designees, like by districts, re-designee on children's services, Katie Beerish, her term is up now, do we need to approve those today, or we approve those later?
And so that's your appointee, so you really just need to make a choice on whether you want her to continue, or you want to put someone else-
Because those have never come before the board.
Normally, we'll, you'll, I've seen informational items to that-
Yes, right.
-effect.
I have always been under the impression that district-specific appointees serve at the pleasure of the commissioner for which they're serving.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to be clear on that.
And that's correct, and that's what you're-
So there's some on here, but I would just look to whoever's district appointee they are to say, I want that person to stay, and then we would move on to something else.
The next thing I want to bring out is for y'all to look at, to keep in mind, and it doesn't say this anywhere, and these are some of the discussions I had with the county attorney, that we have three or four people serving on multiple boards. We've got one that serves on three boards. It's my opinion that you shouldn't leave serve on one board, and this was, I'm going to assume, Commissioner Fleisch, maybe you can help me with this. This was probably done because maybe we didn't get a lot of interest for certain boards in the past, so we kind of took whatever body we could and put them on there. But I think we have more people now. We got a good response from this last, when we just did, that I would think, and we could come back and do this later, but I want to just put it in the back of your mind, that we ought to look at just people serving on one board, and one board only for that. And then we look at, something stuck with me when we talked about this a month ago, that Commissioner Adams said about at-large members being pretty much there for life if they want to be, and I don't think that should be the case either. I think if it's an at-large member, I think in the future, we need to look at, we need to look at term limits. I mean, I think that's only right, that we do, let's say, eight years or whatever we decide to do, not for today, but it's just something that I think that we need to take a hard look at. So basically, an at-large member on whatever committee it be is not there for life, because what I've noticed in this is that, I think we just overlooked, I mean, when I was chairman in '23, we didn't, we didn't do any of the committees, and we haven't done any since I've been a commissioner, have really reviewed them. We've only reviewed when there's an, when there's an open spot, a BCC appointee or an at-large member resigned, such as I have in Beach and Shores, coming up, I have two spots in Beach and Shores that I have applicant, I had like six applications, that I'll bring that back at the next meeting and give you my recommendation, because I'm the liaison, and I took the time to interview these people and find out what they want to do, so to let y'all know. But it just seems like, it does seem like at-large members, because I think we're at fault for that, and maybe, you know, past administrations were at fault of that, of not looking at the at-large members and saying, wow, that guy's been on there since 2002. You know, I mean, 20, 20-plus years on a board. So I just, I just want to bring that up, because I think that's some stuff that we need to look at. It, I'm going to look at it today as we go through, as we go through some of this, but I just, for next meeting, I just want to kind of put that in the back of y'all's mind, that those are some of the things we ought to, that we ought to address. Where they go is whatever we decide at that point in time, but I think, I think, I think those are, those are important, because serving on a, on a thing, you know, is a volunteer, it's a public service, but we want the right people, the best applicants, and have them, have them do their due diligence and do their job accordingly. I don't think I had anything else I wanted to add on that, to make sure. Yes, multiple boards, term limits, you know, we have the deadline date specific, which the counselor talked about, send the resolution from 2011, when it should be done, which she already discussed. Yes, and because, and also, we have, I've got her looking into one on the Environmental Control Hearing Board, but I don't think meets the criteria of being on the Environmental Control Hearing Board. That's the one I looked at when I went through this. So, that's all I have. I just wanted to say that I'm ready to proceed, and we can talk about the stuff I talked about next meeting.
Well, again, Joe, you hit it right on the head. As far as in years past, now we have an abundance of applicants. We did not have the abundance of applicants. It was infilling. It was. Specifically, what somebody had, an element of expertise that could fit, and we called upon them, that's fine. And as far as the term limitation, you know, if you, today, if you do not want to reappoint somebody based on the fact that they serve on multiple boards, today could be that day. We don't have to wait until later on to determine it. As far as-
It's my opinion- It's my opinion, if they serve on multiple boards, they need to pick which board they want to be on, and then resign from the other two, or other one, or whatever, how many they're on.
But here's the challenge. They're not here today to speak on their behalf or place their request.
Yes.
So if we don't give them the opportunity, and today's the day in which we're doing reappointment, we have to make a decision on their behalf.
I've got the names.
So if something is that concerning, if you make a recommendation that we not reappoint, and we have three votes that agree to that, then that person is not reappointed. So simply, it could be done today if it really concerns you. I just wanted to address those two points.
Yeah. I have no problem either way. I just think they should give them the right to choose which one. If we decide to go that way, we'd have to put that in our, we'd have to vote on that first anyways.
We need to amend your board.
Obviously, we're going to have to vote on each committee and keep it rolling on each one, so that each commissioner has the opportunity to discuss, or approve, or disapprove any reappointment, make any appropriate changes in their own profile. But that would also have to be made public and go inside of Section 7 of our agenda at the next meeting, if you made that type of decision. I also think it's not fair and appropriate to take someone off a committee without talking with them, or as the same ways we do when we add them onto a committee.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
In sticking with the ask of the General Counsel, as well as, as fast as things have been moving, since the Attorney's Office has been tasked with this rather challenging chore of sorting and cleaning up past practices, I believe that what the General Counsel is asking today is appropriate, and I would move approval.
So, so what I need you to do today, and particularly, is to go through each of these committees, and, and determine whether you want to reappoint the members that are up for renewal. And if you go through on your attachment here, it'll tell you, like, for instance, Beach and Shore Preservation Advisory Committee is the first one, since you've already done AHAQ and Agricultural Advisory Committee at the last meeting. You've got two members up for renewal for consideration. If we could just go one by one, we'll take notes.
Okay. So you're asking us to look at Beaches and Shores. Current members up for renewal, renewal are William Tuck Farrell and Shelby Graziani. And do we, as a BCC, want those, want to renew those applicants?
Yes, want to reappoint them.
Okay.
We'll do each one in that same manner.
Great.
I thought we would just do them all.
Just a blanket?
Well, and then she would come back with specifics with the, picture of the org chart and term limits.
Well, the, the challenge with that, Mr. Vice Chairman, is that some of them are actually our own appointments, so we have to treat them all independently to ensure that everybody has the opportunity to make their choice.
Good try, trying to make it fast.
I'm sorry. That was good. It was a, is that known as a conversion?
Yes.
Joe, you said I didn't know that, huh?
I will say, Mr. Chair, if I could add one extra thing, which is that we did give you a lot of historical information on these various boards, so you should have some information that you've gotten to help you determine how many years people have served, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes. Well, with that, we're looking for the current members up for renewal at Beach and Shores, which is William Tuck Farrell, who is a BCC appointee, and Shelby Graziani, BCC appointee.
Mr. Chairman, I can tell you, they're both outstanding members, and I make a motion to continue their good work.
Second. All right, so that's a motion by Joe Airman, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you just a second, one question? When we talked about multiple boards, it's probably too late, because we haven't voted on it, but back in the Agriculture Advisory Committee, Anna Kirkland, she serves on three, three different boards. Can we address that at the next meeting if we so choose, Counselor?
No, not if you're appointing them now. That's what, that was how I explained it.
She's up for renewal.
On which committee?
They were, they were, they were reappointed at our last meeting.
For Ag?
Yes.
Well, Ag Advisory hasn't met in over two years.
But it's, I know, but it's, it's still aboard.
But I, I understand what you're saying, and she serves on other committees, so I think when we get to those committees, I don't think she's up for reappointment. I know she's on EDC, for example. Perhaps not up for reappointment this year on that. But I think that's something that if we want to move forward, we're going to have to, there's not an opportunity today to address that particular.
That's what I, that's what I figured. I just looked at it and went, oh, there it is.
Ag was done before the decision. Okay. Next is the Children's Services Advisory Committee, and current members up for renewal are Amber Elserta, member-at-large, and Hopewood House, which is the District Five appointee.
On the District Five appointee, I'm not making any changes at this time.
Okay.
Um, on Amber Serta, she has been a very engaged member of CSAC, so I think that there's value in keeping her there, and I would be happy to make that motion.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by Commissioner Joe. That was you? Okay. So Commissioner Airman. And any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I got another question.
Yes, sir.
Katie Mears wasn't on this list, and she's up for appointment.
Who's that?
Katie Mears, my District Three appointee. She is what, she didn't make this list, but she's actually a, Christina, am I right? She was actually up for, according to the other sheet, she's up, she just didn't make this list.
Which committee?
Christina, please, if you would come up to the microphone, if we're getting that inquiry.
Good morning, Commissioners, and my name is Christina Moore. I'm one of the paralegals with the County Attorney's Office. My question, Commissioner, are we, which committee are we referencing right now?
Children's Services.
CSAC? Yes, you're right. I apologize. She's not on that list. She's the District Three appointee.
You don't have to apologize. I'm not making any changes for that. So just to let the board know. Katie Mears will continue to serve.
So she was, she was up, though?
She's up for renewal.
Okay, so we have to include that in the renewal for Children's Services? Is that a motion, Joe?
Yeah, he said he wasn't going to make any change.
So that's his.
No change, no.
That's his appointee, so.
Okay, you're not making any change.
He's just letting us know he's reappointing her.
Okay. We're good, Counselor?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Next is the Citizen Oversight Committee. There are no members currently up for renewal. Next is Code Enforcement Board. And those members up for renewal, Dana DiFrancesco and Terrence Schlitt.
I don't have as many, have as much experience with the Code Enforcement Board, but what I do know is that there are specific roles that have to be filled, and it's also very difficult to find people that actually want to serve on code enforcement. So if they are willing to serve, I'm happy to move renewal.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, if I can add, that we, that we did just fill the, the new applicant, Vetramill, he's an architect, because there was a opening on that for an architect.
Yes.
So we just filled him, so.
And that was open for several years.
Right. Just like a mechanical engineer for the construction advisory.
And that's a continual problem, a challenge with the building and with engineers and architects. It's highly specialized.
And, and that's your next board item is coming up?
So the next, yes. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Community Development Block Grant, Citizens Advisory Force, no members are currently up for renewal. The Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals, current members up for the renewal are Robert DePietro, as an electrical contractor, Michael LU for Plans Examiner, and Peter Robinson, Contractor Division One. I, I will tell you, they have been difficult positions to fill.
I was going to say.
And I'm very happy and pleased and proud that they're seeking reappointment.
I was going to say, Mr. Chair, my comments here are the same as code enforcement, and I will be happy to move renewal.
Second.
And again, that's a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by Commissioner Moss. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The Economic Development Council, current members up for renewal are Todd Howder, Lee D. Hunter, Joe Idlet III, William J. Penny, Peter Robinson, Carl L. Zimmerman.
Mr. Chair, we are currently going through an economic development plan process, and while I have appreciated everybody's willingness to serve and participate on economic development, I do think that this is a good opportunity to maybe look at our members at large on that committee. Both, I believe, have served since 2013, which is fantastic, and I really do appreciate their work. And I'm not saying that perhaps they shouldn't be reappointed, but I would like to have a conversation at the next meeting, looking at the resumes that we have gotten in on that committee, and maybe think about what direction and what input we want as a direction on moving forward, considering the economic development plan is in the works.
So there are two member-at-large positions.
Mm-hmm.
One is Todd Howder, and one is Carl Zimmerman.
Correct.
You're suggesting to renew all others?
Correct.
At this point?
Correct. And hold those as part of the discussion for next meeting compared to the applicants that we have gotten in, so we can make a decision. I'd also like to pull or have included in that conversation attendance records.
That's the other thing I wanted to discuss, is attendance on, on some of these committees.
Some of these larger committees, if you don't have the right amount of people for a quorum, you can't do the business of the committee. And in fact, I will be bringing an item back in the next month or so regarding some affordable housing attendance issues. So this is kind of in line with that.
Well, with, with any, any committee, three unexcused absences would constitute action by the board if warranted. So we do have that by ordinance.
And I'm not trying to be an ogre about it by any means. I just think if we're going to reevaluate the work of our committees and the structure, then it's, it's worth a conversation. I'm not necessarily prepared to have it regarding economic development today. I think the other people serve a specific role, and I'd rather not necessarily mess with that. But the at-large, I just think, based on some of the commissioners' interest in that economic development plan, it might be, it might, in my opinion, it warrants a larger discussion at the next meeting when we can kind of compare things. But other than that, I would like to move renewal for all the other members except for the at-large members.
Okay. That's a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by Vice Chairman Law.
Mr. Chairman, may I? I'm sorry, again. Mr. Robinson and Mr. Zimmerman are also on the mochbetabees. We just approved Mr. Robinson on the Construction Board of Adjustment Appeals, and Mr. Zimmerman is on code enforcement. So that's, I mean, we don't have to do anything today, but if that's something that we want to do about the multiple boards, I'm, I'm for one board and one board only. But that's, that's just me. But that's, that, that might be a discussion for another day.
Yeah. I hear that, what you're saying, and I, I think we heard that a couple times, but what I would prefer to do personally is give them the opportunity, if that's the direction that the commission wants to go, the opportunity to choose where they would prefer to be.
I agree.
So that's, that's why my motion is really just dealing with the members at large, because they're, that's kind of an open slot, that's not a specific representative.
In addition, we have multiple applicants that are seeking, and I'm not talking about the applications that say, I'll, I'll take anything you'll let me serve on.
Right.
Because I always felt uncomfortable about that. Just want to get a foot in the door, as opposed to, I would truly want to serve on this committee, and I, I feel I can, I could help and make a difference. And, and that's what we strive for. But we have several applications which have no earmark direction or desire or any particular committee, and I believe we're going to find many more applicants that do choose to be in one specific arena or another. I think we did promote getting applications, and we got an abundance of applications, but I don't think each one of them are identified.
And just to kind of add to that comment and conversation, I know in some of our other organizations, you're asked to kind of rank where you'd like to be, first, second, and third choice. If you want to be on all of them, you still have to kind of call out where you prefer to be. And that might be something, if people are applying to multiple committees, that we think about in the future. Because I think what has happened is people, we don't really make changes unless somebody resigns, or we haven't in the past. So there isn't an opportunity to serve, and if you have one committee you really, really want to serve in, unless somebody, some act of God happens, you know, you might not get the opportunity to serve on it for 10 to 15 years. So I would suggest that that might help when, as we move forward and seek applications in subsequent years, instead of just having them blanket check all the boxes, have them rank their top three choices, or whatever the case may be. And that's something we can bring back when we talk about multiple boards in the future.
Okay. Any further discussion? So we have a motion and a second to approve the current members up for renewal, with the exception of the two members at large. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Next item is the Environmental Control Hearing Board. The current members up for renewal are Kevin Rollins, attorney, and recommended by Inereva County Bar Association, and Patrick Walter, again, engineer, recommended by BCC.
Mr. Chair, I would have the same comments as I did for our code enforcement and construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals. This is another very specific hearing board.
Yes.
I believe Commissioner Airman has already requested a review of some of the applicants who may not meet.
who may not meet the requirements.
Yes, there's, well, she actually sits on the board. It's Ms. Kirkland. It says, "Member at Large," so she serves at a member-at-large. But it says, "Citizen not holding elected office," is the caveat.
Yes, I think when she was appointed, she was not an elected official, and now she is.
This is covered.
That's not for this.
Ask the county attorney just to look at it before we made a decision, to see if...
So that'll be something that would have to come back to us if so. But at this point, the two that are up, I would be happy to move renewal of.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Adams, and seconded by Commissioner Ehrman. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. There are no new members up for renewal for the Environmental Land Acquisition Panel.
Mr. Chair, other than the replacement that we already voted on this morning?
That's correct. Planning and zoning commission?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Adams said it very well a minute ago about member-at-large. I think Mr. Bragnano's been on there quite a number of years, best I can tell, since before 2012. I would, I would like to see us look at the other applications and not reappoint him at this time.
Second.
But you want to reappoint Calvin Reams, District Three?
That's my appointee.
That's your appointee? And Mark Mouchu is your appointee?
Yes, sir. Not planning to change.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, would direct it to Commissioner Irman. Would he suggest that we look at the current list of applicants to replace our at-large member?
No, I have, I've seen them, but I haven't made a decision yet. But I had to see if that's, if the board was willing to do that. I just think it's time for a change. He's been there many, many years, and at-large, I think it just needs a new member.
So when I, my motion for economic development was to bring the at-large members back along with the new applicants so we can vet them together, would that be?
I got no problem with that.
Would that be your?
I got no problem with that.
So not necess, so not renew it at this time, but look at all the new applicants and Mr. Bragnano together as, okay.
All right. So we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries three to two, with myself and Vice Chairman Law dissenting. Next item is the Public Safety Council for Criminal Justice and Mental Health and Substance Abuse. No new members are currently up for renewal. The designated members of positions of this committee is established via Florida statutes and are appointed in the same manner. We do have several applicants up the road. Next item is the Tourist Development Council. Current members up for renewal, Will Collins, owner-operator of a motel, hotel, RV, park, or other tourist accommodation, and Amanda Smalley, involved in the tourist industry and is interested in tourism development. I'll tell you that both of them have served well and have had great input, and their attendance is within the college level.
I'd be happy to second that.
We have a motion by Vice Chairman Law, seconded by Commissioner Adams. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Well?
Thank you very much.
Counselor, I think we've accomplished this long and winding road.
It was heroic.
Stay tuned for next week when we bring it all back and collect more data and redefine all the applicants. And we'll actually have full, robust committees. Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Moore, as well. All right. Well, now we're gonna move on. County Attorney Matters. Code enforcement member appoint, appointee.
Mr. Chair, we have a applicant for the architect position on our code board, which is great, because I've heard it's been vacant for a long time. So we recommend that you approve Mr. Vetromile? I'm not sure how to say it.
Vetromile?
His appointment for the term of architect to the code enforcement board.
We have approval.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Well, after 14C, we have Commissioner Matters. Commissioner Moss?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. For the community, the board had decided some time ago to have joint workshops with each of the municipalities. And we did so in late 2023. We met with City of Sebastian and the City of Vero Beach. And then in January of 2024, we met with Felsmere. And there was a consensus at that time that we should go forward and continue to do this over time. And by the way, Indian River Shores and Orca, the towns, were invited to meet at that time, but declined at that time. The meetings were public meetings, publicly noticed. The public was welcome to attend. I got asked that question a few weeks ago, just by a citizen, and I said, "No, everyone's welcome to attend." The staffs worked together to formulate the agenda for each of the meetings, and they were moderated by Mr. Tom Lanahan of the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. So I think the consensus was that this is a good thing to go forward. At the time, there was a memorandum drawn up by the county administrator that perhaps we should do this twice annually in discussions at this time with the county administrator, and he can comment on his own. But we had a conversation the other day and talked about meeting, or at least, you know, offering to meet. I mean, this, of course, is up to the other party. But just extending an offer to meet annually is probably a more realistic schedule. And as he pointed out to me during our discussion, he said, "Actually, that timing was good, because it's after the budget sessions for us and for the municipalities." So that to plan any meetings that might be desired, we should look to the latter part of the calendar year or the earlier part of the next calendar year. So this is just bringing to the, to the board to see if we want to direct, or continue, and at the time, we said we did, but to see if we want to continue to meet or to extend the offer to meet to the municipalities and direct the county administrator to extend that offer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Everybody's got their own microphone. Any further discussion on this?
Mr. Chair, has there been a desire from any of the municipalities that have reached out to us for these meetings? Or is this a unilateral decision by one commissioner?
I, I think the latter. I, you know, I, I can, I guess I, I can't speak for you all. Or y'all.
Y'all.
Y'all? I can't speak for you all. But I, I speak to individual council members and administrators of the other municipalities. I, I know some of you do, and some have tea with the mayor, and I, I like the open-line communication and the exchange. But I think that, again, organizing staff to have the invitation and ask, and then develop conceptual plans for a discussion that might take place in a public forum, and organizing individual committee, I mean, council and commission members to attend. The reason why it was done last year was because it was met with great difficulty. And the year before, I can speak, I mean, there was other things going on. The year prior, when it was done, actually, the, the date was no stranger to the, the date in which it occurred. It started earlier, but we couldn't get dates where we were working together. In addition, each staff, and I don't want to call it sides, it's entities, both entities had to have their staff exchanged through the administration on topics to be discussed. It's more or less a prescribed exchange for public review. It also is vote counting. And I, I believe that it, it might not have the overwhelming benefit that could be achieved or perceived by the presentation of the forum, the same way as when we go down and have the four counties. Many things were said at four counties that did not come to fruition. Many. And we take countless staff hours to ensure that we're prepared for the discussion, and then we have the discussion, and then the media has something to write about, about what they heard was discussed, and it doesn't come to fruition. I, I will say, voice there corrected? I mean, we talk, and we go down. We'll have to go down to another county to have that meeting. I feel the same way about having the group meetings. Now, I, I think there could be a leadership meeting. I think there could be a, a meeting with the county administrator and all members of the municipalities. And that would also act as an inclusive act, because I do believe that the other municipalities who don't engage in that exchange would, would engage in that exchange and meet. And a lot of the concerns can be discussed in a non-political environment, because that's, again, that's where the rubber hits the road, as opposed to our opinions exchanging. I can recount many conversations that happened up at the North County Library, or when we did it down here with Vero. And I don't, I don't recall many of those elements being discussed other than just being discussed, so we got them, we vented them. I'd rather look at something where we're gonna get work done. And, and after all, the administration's working hard, the management's working hard, and we're confronted with a lot of challenges, unfunded mandates, a lot of decision with Septic and Sua, amongst many. And they're gonna require collaboration, cooperation. We can't make those decisions at that meeting. They're, they're a workshop, at best. They're moderated, but they're a workshop. None of us can make a vote or, or vote in, in any pathway, nor can the council. So I believe that I'm looking at the benefit of having the municipal meetings. I, I don't see the, the, the great benefit of, of having those meetings. I believe that we can have great communication in so many other manner and without having staff having to evaluate and evolve a presentation package that we need to express so that we can formulate an opinion that will only be bringing back to us in any event. I believe the exchange is going to happen with the administration, and I would prefer to see an, an organized meeting of all of the managers and the administrator on perhaps a semi basis, or as needed, or as an invitation. And I, I think we'd be happy to host that if you want to have it on, on, on this site. But I, or if you wanted, I don't, I don't know. I, I just think that's a better approach.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may respond to Commissioner Lawrence's question. I received inquiries from Felsmere and Vero Beach city council members. I attended a Felsmere city council meeting a few weeks ago. And we do have Mayor McPartlin here from Sebastian. I didn't hear from them, but if he, if he would, or could, or should, he could give us an opinion. I know he can't speak for the five, but he can speak for himself.
I was just curious, Commissioner Moss, because I haven't had any council members reach out to me. Furthermore, I'm not lost, I'm not lost on the optics of the meetings. But I will add, Mr. Chair, that I believe some of the meetings that we had in short order, we had topics come up within months of those meetings that were not discussed at the joint meetings. That, to be quite frank with you, I think some of us were caught by surprise that why weren't those issues discussed at these, at these joint meetings? And I think that's one of the perils that we run into. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I kind of agree with both sides. As you know, when I was chairman, this is when we, we did the meetings, and except for the one in Felsmere, I think Commissioner Adams was already chairman for that. I think they were worthwhile. I think, I think they were good, because it did open a line of, at least, we're here working together. But I would tell you that some of those things that we discussed are still being worked on today. So it wasn't without merit, because some of those things that we're working on today still have not been completed, but we are, we are still discussing them and working on them. So I think it was good for, good from that standpoint. I think we set a very high bar to say we were gonna try to do it twice a year. You know, I think now we're to the point where I think Mr. Katanich has been very active with, with the City of Vero Beach and the Sebastian and, and staff, also with their city managers in reference to various things, everything from the Home Assistant Boardwalk to Septic to Sua, some of the things you, things you mentioned. I would really, I would encourage that we do it, but I don't think we have to do it formally. I, I think I'd still like to leave it up to the chair and to the county administrator to, to come back to this board and say, "Hey, I think we need to have a meeting with the town of Indian River Shores, you know, a joint meeting for various reasons," and apply those. But I do think we need to make sure that our county administrator is, is speaking with the municipalities on a, on a regular basis and in good communication with them. So I, I see both sides, but, but what you say does hold, does hold some merit as, as to what can be, what can be done and what it takes for staff time to get ready. I think it's important that we keep the line of communication open. And I think we need to, I think between what, between whoever the chair is, say yourself right now, and you and Mr. Katanich, if y'all see a need for one, I think you bring it back to the board, and, and we, we take it from there. We say, "Yeah, we agree, let's, let's meet." But that, I would just encourage that our staff stays very well in tune with, with what our municipalities are doing throughout the county. So that's kind of, I don't know if I really gave you an answer, but I'm kind of where I'm at. I think it's, I think that between the chair and, and the county administrator, I think y'all have, y'all should bring that back to us when you see a need.
And, and that's, thank you for saying something I wanted to say but did not. I, I did not want to leave it up to one person. But I, I do believe that was what I intimated when Chair... But I do believe that was what I intimated when Chair Adams was working three separate components as we were still going through some transition. And I believe there just wasn't enough time. And we also were working on still things, there are still things that, as you admitted, that are being worked on. They would have been worked on either way. Okay? And there was a lot of asks and a lot of expressions made that we didn't even touch. Yet staff worked countless hours on presentations, formatting. And again, I also believe that, as again, you know, we want to speak freely, but when we're having that joint meeting, it's actually reserved back to, hey, is that in our budget? And people are holding back. So I believe that it might be a good step forward. There's a lot of other reservations that are transpiring during the conversation. To the cities, can you reach out to us for a joint meeting?
Haven't heard that.
I haven't heard that at all. I have not heard that they wanted to, perhaps maybe because I speak with the council members and just I feel free to call them or they'll feel free to call me or, you know, we see each other rather frequently. Specifically, I'm looking right at a guy which you can't avoid in Indian River County. Okay? And he's always ready for conversation, except for today. Mr. Mayor? Any event, so.
Well, as I said, I did receive the inquiries from council members as to whether or not we would be doing this again. So they have inquired. Maybe they didn't ask you, I understand that. And perhaps, you know, it was an informal inquiry. That being said, it's still, we gave the impression at the time that this would be ongoing. So, you know, now I suppose it appears that the consensus is that it is not ongoing, at least not at this time, if I understood what you said correctly. Personally, I think we should always extend the invitation, at least annually extend the invitation to meet. We're all busy. We will always be busy and the municipalities will always be busy. And it depends on the amount of importance one places on open communication. Personally, I place a huge importance on that. And yes, I agree, it's time consuming and you can still be working on it for months after a meeting occurs. But that being said, you know, personally, I believe in extending that invitation. But I don't, I do not hear support for it at this time.
If I can just make a couple comments. So last year, we did not do the meetings. It was not because there was a lack of want for open communication, by any stretch of the imagination. We had just finished them up right prior to actually, as part of the transition of leadership that year. The issues that were raised at most of those meetings were larger scale issues dealing with utilities, which took a lot of time for staff to discuss on our side and on the municipality's side. So there was nothing really ripe to bring back for a joint meeting on said topic. And also, we were focusing, or I was focusing on some internal meetings with our employees based on the compensation study and the strategic plan and making sure that we were openly communicating internally as well. So it was not a lack of desire so much as it was a lack of timing. And by the time the six months had kind of rolled around, we were right back in budget season. Now, to your point, Commissioner Moss, I do agree, we're always going to be busy. Everybody's always going to be busy. We used to have, years ago, a mayor's council. It was all the mayors and the county commission chair. And they would get together and meet on a regular basis to talk about different issues affecting each different jurisdiction, areas that they had concerns about or issues that were coming up, to share ideas, share ways to collaborate. And then we would each, or at least we were supposed to, I can't speak for the other cities, bring those issues back to our boards and discuss if there was something that needed to come forward from that perspective. I do think that the open lines of communication is important, and I haven't heard the other commissioners say that that's not important. From my perspective, I was a bit frustrated with the formality of the workshops. It was very difficult to have, it was just hard to have a conversation, because it was more us being there chaperoning, staff talking, than it was the commissioners and the city council members actually having an open dialogue about anything. What I had hoped for those was that there would have been more of an honest communication. But looking back on it, it's very difficult to have that in a public forum. And where I have had better success in really trying to understand the perspective of the cities is to have those one-on-one conversations with city council members. I'm not saying that there's not value in having open public meetings where we can all kind of get together. But I would like those to be, if that's something we do in the future, whether it's the chair that, in conjunction with John, or the cities that come to us, I would like to see those, some kind of specific issue that we're supposed to be talking about and some hopeful outcome of said. I mean, I'm looking at the City of Vero Beach, City of Sebastian, or City of Vero Beach County Workshop Agenda. And the topics were utilities, service territory, plant capacity, Septic to Sewer, recreation, parks, boat ramps, lifeguards, regional growth impact on the city, roadways, building department, fire marshal. But there was no dialogue. It was like a lecture.
A to-do list for us.
And there wasn't, there wasn't a back and forth of communication. And maybe that was not a good expectation of me for a first introductory meeting. Maybe I had set my expectations on the wrong level. But I would have hoped that there would have been kind of a two-way communication. And the same could be said for the City of Felsmere. The City of Felsmere Agenda, I mean, I don't think anybody from the county actually spoke at that meeting. It was all the city manager, which is no longer the city manager, so perhaps there would be a different relationship. But I can tell you, I talked to the city manager for the City of Felsmere at least, you know, once or twice a week. Now, there's only so many places you can go for lunch in Felsmere, and I happen to be one of them. So I apologize, Brian, it's not because I don't want to talk to you, I just happen to run into him all the time. But maybe I'm going to have to start coming to Sebastian and then I can run into you too. But that being said, and then the City of, you know, the City of Sebastian's agenda was probably the best one that we had and the thing that kind of has grown more conversations of staff working together to try to talk about some Septic to Sewer opportunities. And I think that we'll see something coming forward sooner rather than later on that issue. But that's just, and that's, I think it's just a function of the large amount of people all elected, all, let's be honest. Sometimes we're afraid to say what we feel publicly because it gets twisted or misconstrued. And sometimes it's just easier to have those conversations privately. I'm not saying that none of us want to communicate and I, Commissioner Moss, I do agree, there's value. I just think if we're going to do it in the future, whether it's asked of us or we ask of them, I would ask my fellow commissioners to think about what is the outcome that you want to see from these meetings? If it's just to get together and have good relations, that's totally fine. And I can, and I think we did that. But if the outcome is to come up with issues that we can collaborate on, and maybe that was the outcome, we identified issues, we gave them to our respective staff, then they're working on it. But if it's us really understanding what the city's perspective is on things, I don't necessarily know if we got there. Like, I would love to understand some of the city's perspective on growth. You know, the City of Vero Beach put on the agenda regional growth impact on the city. Well, I would also like to have a conversation, which we have not, about regional growth impact on the county, you know? So it's a two-way street. And I just, not to belabor it, but those are my thoughts on it. I will be quiet now.
Well, it's been purported that it is enhanced communication and action being performed. Again, you just displayed that it's not truly an act of communication, collaboration, cooperation. I think we have that, and I think it would be best served in that arena or, as you suggested, a meeting with the chair and all the mayors, have a mayor's forum and just be open. There's no violation of sunshine in that. There's no approach and there's no limitation. And I believe that the leadership will speak freely and without the benefit of a moderator and a photographer and a videographer. I don't, you like, you know, it's a photo opportunity at best, and I mean that sincerely. I don't believe that we accomplish all that we perceive could be accomplished by having those meetings. Again, I'll go back to the four county one. I'm still, I'm still trying to figure out what we've done in the past few years in having that, it was three county, now four county. And what has actually moved forward from having that meeting, other than people providing stuff for the media to be able to elaborate on?
I would agree with you on that, Mr. Chair, with regard to those meetings. You may recall, though, what the meetings that we had, the joint workshops with the municipalities, they were pretty well-attended. So the community was interested, especially for an inaugural effort or at the very least something that hadn't been done in a very long time, not that I'm aware of. So the community has an interest also, and, you know, no one's spoken about that.
I think the community was interested because they didn't know what the show was about. As P.T. Bonham said, you know, you put up a tent with the flag on top and they'll come. And I think that's what happened. That was, it was a well-attended meeting, but I did speak to the other, the attendees afterwards and said, well, you know, the guys got together.
I agree, because I-
It wasn't, there was no flash and bang as the end result. It was something new. Again, the tent was put up, the flag was lit, they saw the elephant go in the room and they followed.
Yeah. Yeah, because you make a good point about the three and four county meetings. I never see much of the public there, you know, if any. It's just elected people.
And it's open mic time.
I agree with you on that.
And then the media has an opportunity to be able to elaborate on the personal views. It's generally done at right before election time, you know, reelection time. You know, I just think it's, you know, I call it what it is. I, you know, if you want to see more-
This is a good year for us. Nobody's running for reelection this year.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good point, too. At any rate, just to conclude, I would like the county administrator to extend the invitation to the municipalities, just to see if there is interest. Do we need a vote on this? We need just a consensus, perhaps? So nobody else is interested in that? Should I take it that way? That nobody else is interested in having the county administrator extend an invitation?
It's your item, and we've heard other discussions, so I would say that we would have to vote on your item or-
Okay, then I'll make, I'll make a motion.
You want to hear a consensus?
Okay.
You've heard the consensus.
Yes, no, I have-
Now you can go for a vote if you want.
I'll handle it that way. That'll be, it'll be clear. I move to have the county administrator contact the municipalities to determine if there is interest in a joint workshop. That's it.
We have a motion. I do not hear a second. Motion dies for lack of a second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, how would you feel about having a, because we would have to, we would basically, if we met with all the cities, we'd have to meet four times. They only have to meet once. What about having, I like the idea of-
Make a meeting.
No, no, about the mayors and the board chairman.
I most certainly think that that's most appropriate, and if you allow me the opportunity-
Do you do it every quarter or twice a year, maybe, or something? I don't know.
I would do that. Let's look at scheduling that and reaching out to the municipalities and ask them if they would like to have a meeting. I'd be happy to host the meeting. And if it's all right, I could pay for the coffee and bagels, but I don't know.
You used a library last time.
Would you have, would there be a problem with that? If I had coffee and bagels and-
Dunkin' Donuts? No.
Sir, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that you and the chair and the county administrator just investigate the possibility and see if there's a need for the mayors and the chairman to meet.
Hey, I'll second that. All in favor? Opposed?
Yeah, I think it falls short. You know, it's great if you do it, but I just think it falls short. So I'm going to say opposed for now. Thank you.
Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Moss's standing. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we see we have some public in the room, and this is your opportunity to speak on any matter, on any accord. You can just come up to the podium and state your name, and just for the record, we'd be happy to hear from you.
Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon.
My name is George Gilone, addiction specialist, interventionist, qualified from Virginia and the state of Florida. There's a few things that I need your help with, I have concerns. One is, Laura Morris mentioned, and I don't know if it could be discussed, so tell me my, the boundary. The people in KSAC who are reporting people and not vetting them or reviewing if they have the qualifications to be appointed in some facility. I thought that was great on her part to bring that out, that people were being appointed. It seemed kind of like a favoritism thing that's just an observation. And so I didn't know how the commissioners felt about that. Right? So that's one thing. Second, you know, I had proposed, and I'll bring the letter because that is good, I like my friends, Derek Moles, Tom Homan. We're in the results business, not the bureaucracy thing. And I had talked to this county commissioner about registering some homes, not regulating them. If you don't know, there has been sex trafficking, human trafficking, and use of drugs. Now, if I knew that law enforcement does that, it's kind of a problem. I got the data, names, everything. It doesn't appear to me that nothing wants to be done in Indian River County. It's going to happen, because my great friend Derek Moles has spoke here, and we're going to try to do something with Indian River County, find out the root cause of what's happening here, maybe bring in DOG investigative people profiting it. I'm just throwing that out there. Because it's very disconcerting to me when the sanctity of human life, of a woman maybe being used for sex, for drugs, is not addressed. Or if there's ill-qualified people in the field running a sober house, there's a lot. I know how many sober houses in Vero. Do any of you know how many total sober houses are in Vero? By any chance? Okay, take that as a no. Okay, take that as a no. Ten to twelve. And there's another one coming that a hospital board is going to build at the taxpayers that spends 3.8 million. Oh, by the way, they don't have a plan. They bought the property. So is this what our, how we protect our community? Because maybe we need federal help with the help of DEA and FBI. And that's okay because I like my friend Dan. He's a great guy, former New Yorker like me. Sometimes we're a little outspoken, but we're in the results business. So I ask the county, what do we do? Because you see, what I learned being in the field of addiction for 15 years, every life is sacred and everybody deserves the opportunity to get well without sex tricks, maybe exploitation with money, or maybe being bought out by funders. There's some people who like to buy votes. I can't be bought, never have been and never will. I mentioned to the sheriff and Currie, if that ever happened to my grandchildren, I won't need their services. I'll handle the business myself. Rest assured, if that ever happened to any of my grandchildren or my only granddaughter, duly noted, it's nationally known, I will handle it. I won't need to call 911. But it's very saddening that other people feel they might not need to do that. So if we have a, you know, all these resources, we have these committees. And I ask you for what? I don't know anymore. Also, the citizens of Indian River County were starting to gather together and wonder the same thing. And I don't want to wonder that. Because I believe all of you have either children or grandchildren. Something happened with them, you wouldn't like it. And so I ask you, what do we do with this thing that we had? Let me quote the date, September 9, 2022. It was the third item. And I don't know if anything's been done. And so do we need federal assistance? If you, if we do, let me know. Because I have Derek Moles' personal number, he can reach out to his great friend, Tom Homan. That's all I ask, the sanctity of human life. Thank you for letting me speak. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak regarding any topic?
Hello, hello, my name is Lalita Jenke and I'm a resident of the county. I do want to thank you all the way you all function. I've been on many boards and I like to see the way this county commissioners function amongst themselves, even though they may not agree with everything that each one brings up. I appreciate it. I've been with, on many boards and county, in Indian River County as well as Vero Beach. And we had compassion in Vero at one time because members of the board didn't, were antagonistic to each other. So, thank you very much. I just want to see you all put a nice tone for us to be able to deal with what's going on from the public side to the commissioners, thank you. Now regarding the application that was, that you all had announced for county residents to apply. If you all couldn't understand each other and the system for us who wanted to make application, it was even more confusing. Because you all have, each, I found out that each one of you all have about six or seven committees that you all are in charge of. That makes about 35 committees and I wasn't so sure which one to make application for. And I made multiple applications only because I saw other people making multiple applications when you look and, when you get that information. And I like it that one of the commissioners said to rank it, what you wanted to work on. But how could you rank it when there are multiple people and you don't know who's going to come on and who's going to come off? So, some of us who have been in this county for a long time and worked on various, I even forgot to mention, monthly meetings and committees of, when you run a nonprofit, you get entangled in multiple nonprofit meetings, monthly meetings. You don't necessarily sit on boards, but you attend them month after month after month, like the homeless services council, et cetera. But you all need to be telling us, how do you reapply now for positions? If you all are making changes, do we, those who have made applications, withdraw their resumes or withdraw their, which ones they made applications for and just choose again?
No, we don't intend on doing anything arbitrarily or capriciously to decide who goes where. This is not, that was done in Roman times.
No, I know. I followed what you all.
No, no, in other words, we pointed out that some applications are not earmarked for or they, the applicants did not make a request to be on a certain committee or some asked to be on any committee that'll have them. There's a difference.
Or multiple committees because we.
Multiple committees.
Because you didn't know which one would be full. And if you're in operations in different positions, you can do, you can serve in multiple ways. So I'm just saying, in the future, make it a little more clear for applicants.
You know, once again, we've almost less than, we've taken away the committees that no longer had a purpose and that was done with the board. So, at one point, we had such an abundance of committees. Now we have some, and a couple of committees have enveloped over the years due to needs and concerns and trials and tribulations in which we've been confronted with. And we formulated a new committee. In doing so, the cast of applicants and the cast of current appointees is rather overwhelming. So, we want to assure that people who have a desire to serve for the greater good of the citizens of Indian River County, that they do so in an appropriate fashion and also that they're appointed into a committee that they'll have an impact. So, again, if you have applications that have no direction, we don't know what to do with them. And then again, there are others that have specific direction. So that all has to be looked at before we go forward at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, there's no one left. So I guess there's no further public comment and this meeting is now adjourned.